Bienvenidos a nuestra cita de diciembre a Aida Vista. Es muy divertido para tres de nosotros estar aquí esta noche porque nuestras hijas, hijos van y fueron a Aida Vista hace nosotros muchos veces. Yo conozco a señora Killahan hace dieciocho años cuando enseñamos Junior Grade Books.
Sí.
Sí, en mi primer año, este mes, el tiempo fluye. Así que bienvenidos a nuestra reunión de diciembre aquí en Aida Vista. Este es un lugar divertido para nosotros para quedarnos porque tres de nosotros tienen hijos aquí o hijos que fueron aquí y un par de nosotros nos conocimos hace 18 años cuando enseñábamos Junior Grade Books, yo diría en este gimnasio, pero este gimnasio no estaba aquí, pero un gimnasio como ese. Así que también es un momento loco en el mundo y estamos tan tristes que señora Woodside Di Carillo, siempre recuerdo la parte de Carillo, pero no el resto, no puede acompañarnos. Así que vamos a ser guiados en el Pledge of Allegiance esta noche por la señora Davis, nuestra Asistente Superintendente para Finanzas y Operaciones. Eso es bueno.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y Superintendente Beam, ¿te gustaría iniciar nuestro bienvenido esta noche, por favor?
Yo lo haría. Voy a devolverlo a la señora Davis para proporcionar el bienvenido oficial a Aida Vista para esta noche.
Buenas noches, miembros del Consejo de Educación, Superintendente Beam, colegas y miembros de la comunidad. Bienvenidos a Aida Vista. Como dijo el presidente Vonck, nuestro prestigioso principal no pudo estar con nosotros esta noche, desafortunadamente, porque eso habría sido una introducción maravillosa de ella. Pero soy privilegiada de poder saludarte a Aida Vista. No puedo hablar español. Sin embargo, es genial tener a todos en la audiencia esta noche y para decirles que tenemos cosas emocionantes pasando en Aida Vista y una de esas cosas emocionantes tiene que ver con nuestro apoyo de la comunidad y actualmente estamos trabajando en el rediseño de algunos de los interiores del edificio. Así que estamos pasando por ese proceso ahora y en algún momento tendremos eso para la comunidad ver. De lo contrario, bienvenidos a Aida Vista.
Gracias, señora Davis. Superintendente Beam, dado que no podemos escuchar nuestros señales instruccionales, ¿te gustaría actualizarnos todos sobre dónde creemos que estamos y dónde podríamos estar con respecto a las estrategias de mitigación de COVID?
Ciertamente, es mi placer hacerlo. Tenemos varias cosas que estamos siguiendo relacionadas con COVID y la pandemia y parece que tan pronto como lleguemos a la pista con las cosas que estamos siguiendo, aún se introduce una nueva variable y la nueva es el Omicron. Hablaré un poco sobre eso en un momento. Terminamos estas tres semanas que estaban entre el Thanksgiving y la pausa de Navidad, que comenzó el viernes para los estudiantes, con algunos datos interesantes. Tuvimos el total diario más alto de casos de COVID de los que se terminó la semana de diciembre 3. Esa fue la semana inmediatamente después del Thanksgiving. Para la semana que acabó el viernes, el 17 de diciembre, bajamos mucho. Tuvimos 23 casos y esos 23 casos, solo seis de ellos estaban en el nivel secundario. Eso realmente pone en marcha la tendencia que hemos visto todo el año, donde la mayoría de nuestros casos estaban en el nivel secundario, lo cual nos dijeron esperar porque ese grupo ha estado sin vacuna durante el semestre principal. Así que esos 23 casos de estudiantes para nuestra población de estudiantes de más de 9,300 estudiantes, tuvimos que volver a mediados de septiembre para ver números que eran tan bajos para nosotros. Así que en la conversación con el departamento de la salud e intentando entender esa tendencia, el departamento de la salud vio tendencias similares en estudiantes de edad secundaria en todo el condado y pensamos que es porque la introducción de la vacuna, incluso con la primera dose del reglamento de dos doses, ya había un efecto protector. Así que nos sentimos bien sobre eso y ese es un punto en el que hemos estado tratando de llegar a todo el tiempo, es tener a todos nuestros estudiantes eligible para recibir ese instrumento de mitigación adicional, que estadísticamente es el instrumento más fuerte que tenemos disponibles para nosotros fuera de ahí con la vacuna. Hemos visto en ese mismo periodo donde tuvimos un bajo de casos de estudiantes terminando la semana pasada, vimos 11 casos de miembros de la empresa y eso fue más alto. Hemos estado tendiendo bastante bajo con los casos de personalidad porque, nuevamente, su disponibilidad para la vacuna y disponibilidad para evitar la infección con COVID como resultado. 11 no es un número grande considerando nuestro census general de personalidad de más de 1,000 empleados, pero fue un número que había estado tendiendo más alto cuando los ratios de estudiantes habían estado tendiendo más baja. Así que pensamos que eso también está conectado en la conversación con los funcionarios de la salud, la disponibilidad del booster. Sabemos que la inmunidad de la vacuna se detiene cuanto más tiempo ha pasado desde la vacuna completa y luego esa inmunidad se construye de nuevo con el booster. Así que también vamos a estar atentos a esos datos. Los datos que están emergiendo con el Omicron están emergiendo muy rápidamente y todavía son nuevos, así que no tenemos todas esas tendencias. El departamento de la salud ha anunciado que está terminando el orden de salud pública que requiere máscaras dentro de edificios escolares y ese orden termina como anunciado previamente el 2 de enero. Y lo que estamos haciendo es simplemente usando este tiempo para recopilar datos adicionales. Un punto que hemos estado mirando con cuidado es tratar de ayudar a todas las personas que sirven en nuestros hospitales. Sabemos ahora mismo que nuestros hospitales están más llenos de pacientes que nunca han estado y esos son pacientes con todo tipo de necesidades de atención médica, no simplemente COVID. Y sabemos que pacientes que necesitan cuidado de emergencia debido a un ataque a corazón o un accidente de autoesférico o lo que sea, los hospitales nos informan debido a la gran cantidad de censos en los hospitales, eso está teniendo un efecto y un efecto en el cuidado general. Estamos muy agradecidos a todas las personas que trabajan en nuestros sistemas de atención médica. Sabemos que han sido taxados y exhaustos y nos han preguntado respetiblemente. Dijeron, hey, durante este tiempo de altos niveles de hospitalizaciones, cualquier cosa que la gente pueda hacer para mantenerse seguros, para reducir la necesidad de servicios hospitalarios va a ayudar a todos. Así que todos estamos tratando de hacer nuestro papel colectivamente para mantenerse seguros y han forzado fuertemente a la gente a continuar usando cubierturas faciales internas en entornos llenos para evitar la transmisión a personas sin vacuna o transmisión que podría resultar en una transmisión de breakthrough. La pieza con la que se trata el Omicron que es nueva es que parece que el Omicron infecta a más gente de un caso inicial que infecta a más gente alrededor de ellos y lo está haciendo más rápido y se informa de un doblecimiento de casos cada dos a tres días y cuando haces la matemática, llega a números altos bastante rápidamente. También hemos oído informes tempranos y, nuevamente, esto es donde más tiempo será beneficioso, que el Omicron está siendo más exitoso en superar los antifinales de la vacuna inicial, ciertamente con antifinales de no vacuna y incluso algunos antifinales de boost de individuos, aunque menos común en ese caso. Lo que no sabemos es el efecto del Omicron en niños que han sido recientemente vacunados. Nos sentimos que es un signo prometedor que los datos hasta el final de la primera semana completa de diciembre muestran que el 51% de estudiantes de edad secundaria que viven dentro de los límites geográficos de Forest Hills ya han recibido al menos una dose de la vacuna y pensamos que eso contribuye al drop off en los casos que vimos la semana pasada entre los estudiantes, especialmente estudiantes de edad secundaria. Así que hay muchos datos que se combinan todos juntos y hemos tratado de usar los datos, usar la ciencia lo mejor que podemos y usar el tiempo que tenemos disponibles para tomar la mejor decisión que tengamos. Lo que sé que es incómodo para todos es que esto simplemente continúa evolucionando. Dos semanas atrás, un mes atrás, no habíamos hablado del Omicron y aquí estamos y hay más información que está fuera de ahí. Lo que queremos es que nuestros hijos estén en la escuela cada día. Lo que queremos es operar la escuela cada día con un componente completo de nuestros miembros talentosos dedicados. Lo que queremos es que toda nuestra equipo de operaciones sea capaz de operar al máximo de su capacidad. Queremos que los padres y las familias sean capaces de involucrarse en sus rutinas porque sus hijos están en la escuela y así es el objetivo que tenemos en todo esto. Sé que la gente está preguntándose, hey, ¿qué pasa cuando comienza el segundo semestre, el 3 de enero? Y solo estamos pidiendo un poco más de paciencia mientras miramos eso. Hemos visto, nuevamente, los efectos positivos de la vacuna y proporcionar un efecto protector no solo para nuestros estudiantes, sino solo para nuestra comunidad más ampliamente. Y sabemos que eso está tomando tiempo para pasar por allí, es un proceso programado de cuando alguien recibe su primera dose hasta cuando están vacunados completamente en eso y también usando este tiempo para entender los datos que están empezando a emergir ahora en esta variante del Omicron, queriendo usar toda esa información para tomar las mejores decisiones posibles para cumplir con nuestros objetivos que acabo de enumerar también, tener a todos nuestros hijos en la escuela cada día y ser capaces de operar completamente mientras avanzamos. Sabemos que los órdenes de salud estables continúan y esos órdenes de salud estables son que cualquiera que sea positivo por COVID necesita permanecer en casa desde el trabajo o la escuela. Ese es un orden de salud estable. Todavía es un orden de salud que dejamos a las familias saber si su hijo es en contacto cercano, independientemente de si su hijo está vacunado, mascado, lo que sea, si han venido en contacto cercano con el virus para dejar a las familias saber, ese es un orden de salud que continuaremos, así que las familias pueden ayudar y observar cualquier síntoma y podemos recoger esa información adicional mientras avanzamos. También sabemos, como vimos en ese dato la semana después del Thanksgiving, que después de este periodo de Navidad cuando la gente está junto con la gente y en entornos que típicamente no son durante todo el año, que puede haber más transmisión durante ese periodo de tiempo. Así que esa es otra cosa que estamos buscando. Estamos esperando el día en el que no tengamos que llevar mascarones, no hay obligación allá afuera. Creo que también estamos pasando por un periodo en el que puede ser menos sobre los mandatos de larga duración y creo que es más sobre saber qué herramientas usar, en qué momentos en el tiempo para abordar los flare-ups que pueden ocurrir o aumentos en el riesgo de transmisión que pueden ocurrir en varios entornos, en varios momentos y en varios entornos. Así que está tratando de tomar un poco más de un enfoque informado en esas cosas. Así que tratando de procesar toda esa información. Sabemos que el orden de transporte del gobierno federal sobre transporte mascarón, eso se aplica a los aviones, también se aplica a los autobuses escolares, que ese requisito de mascarones todavía permanece en place, creo que al menos hasta el fin de marzo de 2022. ¿Cuál es? 18 de marzo, gracias Julie. De 2022 es donde está el orden actual en eso. Y así que este es un proceso y un virus que estamos continuando de aprender más y más sobre mientras avanzamos. Así que apreciamos la paciencia de todos mientras procesamos toda esa información. Es un poco frustrante que aquellos de nosotros en el entorno escolar estemos teniendo que poner cascos de salud pública, no estamos acostumbrados a eso, pero continuamos teniendo buena comunicación con los funcionarios de salud pública, tanto en el nivel local, el nivel estatal y nuestros funcionarios médicos en el hospital. Y nuevamente, nuestra mayor apreciación se le da a todos los que trabajan en nuestros hospitales ahora mismo, donde sabemos que están extremadamente fatigados, pero han estado haciendo trabajo heroico. No es raro, si no trabajamos en un hospital, que nos encontramos necesitando un hospital, pero ahora mismo lo que estamos escuchando una y una y una vez más es que esa necesidad es muy limitada en este momento. Así que tendremos una actualización de decisión y comunicación a todas nuestras familias antes de regresar por el semestre. Espero poder hacerlo incluso esta semana, pero sabemos con el Omicron, nuevamente, esto es una situación en desarrollo rápido y mientras obtenemos más datos y información, eso ayudará a informar nuestras decisiones. Así que eso es un poco lo que quería compartir como actualización relacionado con dónde estamos con la pandemia. Solo voy a decir que apreciamos la paciencia de todos y la cooperación y el esfuerzo colectivo como si pensáramos en grandes desafíos nacionales o globales, es realmente cuando todos podemos juntarnos colectivamente que podemos ver el mejor resultado y en el periodo más corto posible para pasar por ese desafío. Así que eso es lo que tengo para hoy.
Gracias. ¿Hay preguntas para Superintendente Beam? Está bien. Ahora nos gustaría invitar a cualquiera que quisiera dirigirse al Consejo y a los comentarios públicos para hacerlo. Por favor, esto es una oportunidad para solo eso, para dar comentarios al Consejo. No es una discusión. Estamos obligados por la ley a tener una reunión mensual para conducir el negocio del Consejo en detalle en la cuestión seis de la agenda bajo el grupo de consentimiento. Absolutamente entendemos que algunos de los comentarios que nos han traído, la gente está buscando respuestas, información. Nunca he explicado por qué seguimos la tradición de pedir que se mantengan hasta el final de la reunión para el reporte de Superintendente Beam y espero que me permitas elaborar por solo un segundo. Nuestro trabajo es pequeño y grande. Tenemos un empleado en Superintendente Beam. Nuestras responsabilidades incluyen evaluarlo y contratarlo, supervisar la visión y asegurarse de que lo está ejecutando correctamente y adoptando leyes y políticas biológicas. Él es en cargo de las operaciones diarias del distrito. Delegamos eso a él. No soy educadora, un par de nosotros lo son, pero no creo que quieran ser cargados con operar en otro distrito escolar fuera de los que ya están trabajando. Así que no somos la mejor equipada para responder el 99% de las preguntas que nos han traído. Así que lo que tradicionalmente hemos hecho y estamos agradecidos, verás a Kyle Gilbert caminando por allí, es nuestro nuevo director de comunicaciones y está enseñándonos cosas todos los días. Estamos emocionados por algunas de las oportunidades que está trayendo para asegurarnos de que aumente esta oportunidad de interactuar con la gente en nuestro distrito. Pero hasta que todo esté listo, Superintendente Beam toma notas, intenta responder las cosas en los comentarios públicos. Así que por favor, mantente atento si piensas que hay algo que puede compartir contigo que sería la mejor manera de ver qué tipo de retroalimentación puedes obtener sobre las cosas que traes durante los comentarios públicos. Así que cualquiera que quisiera hacer eso, por favor, salga al podium y indique su nombre para nuestros minutos, por favor. Estamos pidiendo que limiten sus comentarios a tres minutos. Pueden ver que tenemos un reloj. Ciertamente te permitirá terminar una frase, pero en algún momento, si continúa, voy a seguir y mute el micrófono, a causa de la decencia de todos, para tener la misma oportunidad de usar su tiempo igual. Y nuevamente, sus comentarios son destinados para el grupo aquí. Así que por favor, contacte con nosotros. Si no se trata de algo en el distrito o el Consejo, entonces este probablemente no es el mejor lugar para hacerlo. Así que espero que dé un poco de fondo en cómo hacemos lo que hacemos y, como dije, estamos emocionados por las oportunidades que Kyle está trayendo a nosotros. Todos solo firmamos algunos acuerdos de que tendremos direcciones electrónicas individuales después del primer de año. Sé que los miembros de la comunidad pensaron que sería útil poder conectar con individuales miembros del Consejo. Sí, así que aprendiendo, Kyle es una persona maravillosa que tenemos en la organización y somos, como nos han dicho muchas veces, aprendedores de vida y estamos disfrutando ese viaje. Así que espero que eso tenga sentido y si alguien quisiera ir adelante y compartir comentarios con el Consejo, por favor, siga adelante.
Me llamo Michelle Alsberg. Soy residente aquí durante 35 años y fui a Pine Ridge a través de la escuela de la FHC. Estoy aquí hoy hablando como aliada de la comunidad LGBTQ+. Después de la entrevista de la TV8 con la señora Boone de la grupo Just for Education, muchas personas fueron heridas, enfadadas y temerosas por sí mismas y sus hijos. Tratar de prohibir libros como My Footprints en los grados K a 12 hizo que estas familias se sintieran presionadas y desobedecidas, todo porque el libro tiene a una pequeña niña vietnamana con dos padres. Una madre de Pine Ridge dijo, definitivamente duele mi corazón saber que mi hijo perdió la oportunidad de escuchar este libro leído a la escuela. Hubiera encontrado la similaridad con nuestra familia increíblemente especial. Una ex profesora de la FHC me envió un mensaje, qué un momento triste en nuestro distrito para familias como la mía, Michelle. Gracias por el trabajo que están haciendo a nuestro lado. Es difícil ser odiado por quien ama. By banning books featuring characters with diverse backgrounds, you would be sending a message to faculty, students, and parents that if they are people of color or part of the LGBTQ+ community, that they are not welcome at Forest Hills public schools. Parents can always prohibit their child from checking out specific books. We do have families in the district that deserve representation, so to assert that there should be no books of these topics in any K through 12 school to serve as a mirror and resource for them is very harmful. Public schools are for all of the community, not one belief system. The school district has always been clear about how they teach and what they are preparing students for. If some parents don't like it, they should have done their research better. Thank you for your time.
Gracias, Michelle.
Mi nombre es Doug. Fue interesante escuchar los comentarios del Consejo. Tienes un empleado para manejar y respeto ese rol. Mi argumento con el Consejo es que los recursos no se manejan correctamente y estamos permitiendo un control individual y separar a nuestra comunidad. Scopes are the lowest voter turnout of any elected official and as such, votes received do not oftentimes represent the majority of the wishes of the people. Estamos aquí hoy para decirles que este Consejo y el Superintendente Dan Beam no representan la mayoría de nuestra comunidad con su política de hacer con respecto a GLI, CRT, SEL, equidad y inclusión, búsquedas y transparencia financiera. Me gustaría leer un par de páginas de la carta que Dan Beam envió a las familias de Forest Hills el 3 de junio de 2020. Ciertamente explica su posición en la CRT y citó, "Les escribo hoy como una nación enfrenta dos pandemias, el coronavirus y el racismo sistémico. La primera pandemia es nueva y sus efectos han sido sentidos por todos en las últimas semanas. La pandemia de racismo es a menudo de las personas blancas, bueno, el racismo es de siglo y los efectos son desiguales y las personas de color sufrieron la opresión en generaciones, mientras que demasiado a menudo las personas blancas permanecen silenciosas en las líneas silenciosas. Debemos trabajar duro para llevar a cabo ambas pandemias. En orden de que nuestros esfuerzos lleven a cabo, todos debemos hacer nuestro papel. Podemos ver fácilmente con los sacrificios comunitarios para llevar a cabo la pandemia del coronavirus, de igual forma con la pandemia de racismo, cada uno de nosotros debe hacer nuestro papel. Como padre trabajando con mi esposa para ayudar a nuestros hijos en casa todos los días, a veces, a veces, mientras pierdo y perdemos ayudando a mis hijos a procesar el racismo sistémico, violencia y odio." En 2022, tenemos una elección para elegir a la mayoría de ustedes y revertir el curso de estas políticas racistas. La mayoría silenciosa está despertada. Nuestros esfuerzos serán para seleccionar y backer candidates con opiniones similares de la mayoría. Una vez que esto esté hecho, será hora de evaluar el papel de Dan Beam como distrito durante el resto de su contrato. Quién sabe, puede necesitar un ejecutivo altamente pagado para enseñar canoa de mar en nuestra escuela ambiental. Dan, su carta se lee como una campaña política. ¿Es Lansing tu próximo plan? Has sucesivamente dividido este distrito con tu adoctrinamiento. Forest Hills no quiere a ti y especialmente Lansing no necesita a ti. Gracias.
Soy profesora de biología en la escuela central y una madre en el distrito de un graduado de 2019 y un actual senior. En light de lo que pasó en Oxford High School, ha habido una elevada conciencia de seguridad escolar. Recientemente me preguntaron si el asesinato en Oxford me hizo temblorar para ir a la escuela. Mi respuesta fue no, más que cualquier otro día. Los asesinatos escolares han estado ocurriendo durante décadas y solo porque estaba en nuestro patio no me hace más temblorar. Siempre es algo que es posible, desafortunadamente. Creo que como comunidad deberíamos empezar a ver realmente cómo podemos mejorar la situación. Ha habido mucho discurso sobre agregar seguridad, detectores de metal y removir bloqueadores y bolsas de bolsas de escuelas en general para prevenir que los armamentos se traigan a la escuela. Y por mi opinión, no es un buen uso de dinero y necesitamos ser proactivos y no reactivos. Necesitamos abordar la situación que lleva a una persona joven sintiéndose tan solo y enojada que elige traer un arma y matar a sus compañeros de clase. En mi opinión, eso requiere tres cosas básicas: más personalizadores y personalidad social en todos los edificios, más clases pequeñas y un currículum k-12 social y emocional de distrito. Más personalizadores son necesarios para que los estudiantes que necesiten servicios de salud mental puedan recibirlos tan pronto como sea. Con mi propia experiencia con mis hijos, las reuniones afuera son difíciles de encontrar y requieren que los estudiantes perdan mucho más tiempo de clase que recibir tratamiento en la escuela. Nuestros personalizadores actuales no tienen el tiempo para tratar todas las necesidades de nuestros estudiantes y muchos caen por los huevos. Pequeñas clases pequeñas permitirán que los profesores sepan más personalmente a sus estudiantes que pueden con 32 estudiantes en una habitación y contenido para enseñar que los estudiantes deben completar para el examen estatal. Los profesores son la primera fila de ayuda para los estudiantes. Necesitamos ser capaces de ver realmente a cada estudiante y estar seguro de que nadie es capaz de ocultarse en el back de la habitación y no ser notado. Los profesores serán mejores capaces de hablar realmente con cada estudiante más de una vez por semana, con más de un rápido hola en la puerta. Los profesores necesitan sentirse cómodos y apoyados con tal vez enseñar un poco menos de contenido para permitir más tiempo para que los estudiantes estén confíos en lo que están aprendiendo y apoyados en su aprendizaje versus correr a fin de hacer las cosas para un examen. Y necesitamos estar bien con el paso hacia atrás y ayudar a nuestros estudiantes no sentirse sobrepasados con demasiado contenido. El aprendizaje social y emocional necesita ser un foco en todos los niveles de grado, separado de cursos específicos de contenido. Nosotros como distrito deberíamos tener un programa universal y abierto a la comunidad para participar también. ¿Cuán poderoso podría ser eso de tener niños en todos los niveles de grado trabajando en un mismo thread para abrir comunicación en el aprendizaje social y emocional? Nosotros como educadores y adultos necesitamos darse cuenta que sería okay reducir el aprendizaje de contenido por media hora por día, cinco minutos de periodo de clase en el nivel secundario para ayudar a los estudiantes con todo lo que se les pone en nuestro mundo. El mundo ha cambiado tanto desde que estaba en la escuela o incluso comenzó a enseñar. Necesitamos darse cuenta de que nuestros estudiantes no necesitan ser enseñados todo el contenido que nos enseñaron, ya que pueden buscarlo. Agregar una media hora al día para centrar Sorry, ¿puedo continuar? Lo siento. Está bien. Agregar una media hora al día para centrar el aprendizaje social y emocional podría beneficiar a nuestros estudiantes por una vida. Yo enseñándoles el ciclo de la cerveza no lo hará.
Gracias, Patty. ¿Estás terminada? Muy bien.
¿Puedo...? Está bien. Así que el aprendizaje social y emocional puede verse diferente en muchos sentidos y lo que realmente me gustaría ver es, espera, tengo una cosa más, si un, tal vez un comité formado de educadores k-12, miembros de la comunidad, administradores, miembros del Consejo, para que podamos descubrir cómo hacerlo y me gustaría ver algo en marcha para el año escolar 2022-2023. No creo que sea algo que pueda esperar o solo sea un ensayo en un edificio y que todos nuestros estudiantes necesitan apoyo ahora y necesitan saber que estamos ayudando.
Gracias mucho.
De verdad.
Dos semanas atrás, dos semanas atrás, hubo algunos muy molestos de los 8ºs debido a un incidente potencial en la escuela. Hice check con Judy y tú, Dan, y también consulté con el Departamento de警察县郡县 you, Dan, and I also inquired with the Kent County Sheriff Department. I was told by the Kent County Sheriff Department, there was a report made in the school and the local SRO were involved investigating this incident. It was not communicated to parents at Eastern Middle or Eastern High, which caused some alarm. Kids were discussing the situation. Rumors started spreading like wildfire. I understand there's a policy and a protocol to follow, but unfortunately, it is not made available for parents to read what this is or kids to have access. I have read the Forest Hills District Handbook, and it's honestly vague in its response to security and safety protocols. I did ask several district families with middle school students if their child knows what those protocols are. Many had no clue what they were or where to find the information. I am pleading that you please take this as a priority to define your measurements, update the handbook, and educate the kids. I would also request that you consider notifying parents of these situations so we can have these conversations at home. I'm not asking for a child's name, but asking you to tell us to keep us advised and know you're actively handling the situation. We need to reassure the kids that they are in a safe environment. In this case, many did not feel that way. Several students stayed home the following day and expressed concerns regarding how the situation was handled at school. Even several years ago, there was an incident at the football game, and Amy Palo even sent out an email keeping parents apprised of what the situation was and how they were handling it. We need to see more communications like that to the parents. I'm asking that you please make sure that schools have financial support that they need for basic materials. It's quite mind-boggling to know that my local elementary had a paper shortage and couldn't print report cards to send home. The kids were also told that the shortages that they were experiencing at the schools, elementary and middle, required them to print their school projects at home. This had happened on multiple occasions, not just once. This is a basic requirement, and I feel that it should be fulfilled. Can we make sure the staff have all the basic necessities so they don't have to purchase some of these products out of their own pocket? I would guess with the surplus in our current budget that you could assist in this matter.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Hookster-Janson. I live in Forest Hills Central District and have two kids that recently graduated from Northern High School. I just want to talk today about the COVID mitigation strategies coming into the new year, and I'm glad you brought that up, Dan. I just heard on the news before I came here that Omicron is now the dominant variant in the U.S. I think you, you brought up, but Omicron's way more contagious, like two to three times more contagious than the current Delta surge that we're struggling with right now. The hospitals are completely full. I should preface this with, I've been working with COVID patients for the, since the pandemic began, and I have a master's in public health, so I have sort of a, anyway, I'm very concerned about this, let's put it that way. So, what we're seeing in, we all want to remain in school. We want our kids to have in-person learning. In Europe, where Omicron is coming, you know, they're usually about a month ahead of us. They're talking about closing schools. London was told, the parents were told not to, or to anticipate fully remote after the holiday break. In the Northeast, where Omicron is ahead of us, they're closing schools. If we want to remain in person next year, we need to continue all the mitigation strategies. This is more contagious than anything we've seen. So I'm just promoting that we continue masking, continue contact tracing, continue social distancing, all of the things that we've been doing. I think the school already handled the ventilation issues, I believe, but that one, if it hasn't been taken care of, is going to be really important going forward. So, just a couple of studies, the one big one being U of M just put out a, a new study on masking in school. What they found was that since schools opened in the fall in Michigan, and the whole study was just on Michigan schools, so since the school opened in the fall in Michigan, schools have been driving our current surge. So they looked at all the outbreaks, and 57% of outbreaks started in the school, or of all the outbreaks that they tracked over a, I think it was a two-month period, 57% were in the school. So, this is, you know, what we're seeing is, they start in schools, they spread to the community. Then they looked at schools that had mask mandates versus those who didn't. The schools that had mask mandates, while the schools that did not have mask mandates had a 62% higher spread, rate of spread than schools that had mask mandates. So it's clear masks work. We know this from multiple studies. Other, there are two other significant studies that they looked at in school systems, both of which showed transmission to be less than 1% in schools that use mask policies. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
My name is Don White. My wife and I have lived in the district for 49 years. We have two sons that graduated from Forest Hills Central, and now we have three grandchildren in the district. When I applied to be a bus driver, I wanted to give back to the community and maybe drive my, drive my grandchildren to school. By the way, I did do that. I never imagined that I would be on the Forest Hills Bus Driver Board, write an email to the school board, and now addressing them. I wrote a letter to the board on September 26. I'll read the letter and then give you an update on the progress. Forest Hills talks how important transportation is, but it does not translate into action. We had our supervisor quit before school started, and that position has not been filled yet. The position has not even been listed as an opening. Office staff has been working six and seven days a week trying to keep up. It's also a safety concern for when our drivers try to get to office over the radio and there is no one in the office, because they're all driving buses. The second concern is that in 2016, the bus washers' pay was $11.87. Our supervisor had been trying for a month to get them a raise. His supervisor finally gave them a raise to $12.08. This is an insult after five years without a raise to give them $0.21 raise. We have two bus washers that work 10 to 12 hours a week, so they're not talking a lot of money to give them a decent raise. It'd be great if you could help resolve these two concerns. Now for the update on my concerns, the job was posted in the middle of October. After two weeks, it was awarded to the acting supervisor. It took until the first part of December to work out the details for her to accept the job. Her job was then posted, and at the writing of this document, is unfilled. There was nothing done with the bus washers' pay until a week ago when I informed Mr. Bean that I was going to address the board. At that time, I was sending an email telling me the pay was raised to $13 an hour. I reminded her of what was said at the, our meeting six weeks ago. And at 5 o'clock tonight, I got a response. "The board can judge if these two concerns have been addressed in a timely and correct fashion." Thank you for giving me, giving me this time to address the board.
Thank you, Dan.
Hola, hi. I have nothing prepared. I'm just an Aida Vista parent, and it's a pleasure just to have you here. I just wanted to share and thank you because this school is something special, and you can tell English is not my first language, and that's why my kids are here. I'm originally from Mexico, and this is an important building, for everybody to know, and I, I appreciate the support of the board. We have addressed many different problems. I have two kids in this building, but I just wanted to share in Spanish to everybody. Here it says, somos una familia. And I think this school is an example because I'm part of PTO, and you see, parents driving their kids to school, making, driving other kids every day, parents working on recess here, lunch, and nobody's complaining. I know there's like a little war in the district, but parents of Aida Vista, we work, and we're here because we know how special this building is. Our kids have learned here about language, but also culture and diversity. So I just wanted to please ask for keeping, continuing the, the important work of the immersion programs, because this is a place, an example for the district. I just wanted to share that, and I know, I see Senor Santiago here. He has been here. I see many parents, former Aida Vista parents, and I just wanted to remind you here, somos una familia, we're a family. We might not agree on everything, but we respect and we love each other. Thank you.
Could you please share your name? Did you get a name? Thank you, Aida Vista parent, but would you mind sharing?
Paula de la Cruz.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joanna Shaw. I live in the Central District, but my kids attend Aida Vista and Northern Trails, also through the Spanish immersion program. I don't have anything specific prepared to say, but what I wanted to do was come and show support for the board. And I also wanted to urge you all to follow the science when it comes to COVID mitigation. I think it's become, unfortunately politicized, and we count on all of you to rise above that and look at the real science and the data and figure out what's right for our children. Omicron is very scary, and the idea that vaccination alone will not necessarily keep people from being sick, and yeah, they may not end up in the hospital, but they will miss school, they will miss work, and I don't want things to shut down again. But if we don't have teachers who can teach because they're sick, or we have a majority of classes who are sick, I mean, that, that will lead, lead to shutdown. So, again, it seems like it's changing every day. Please follow the science. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna.
Hi, my name is Melissa Prill. I am the mother of two Forest Hills Elementary students and the wife of Nick Prill. I'm pretty sure you all know who he is. I don't like public speaking. It terrifies me, so I'm just going to plow through this. I felt compelled to speak today, and that compulsion was much stronger than my terror. I also came here today to thank you. Let me explain this. Past Thursday was our kindergarten son's very first performance, his first Christmas concert. He got to stand with his classmates and sing together in front of all their families. His amazing teacher, whom he adores, led the class in that energetic, always positive way that the best kindergartner teachers seem to have. Anyway, I wanted to thank you for playing such a huge part in allowing me to enjoy all of this from the comfort of my own couch. I was actually still in my pajamas. It was wonderful. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for your role in this experience. Had this board not made the decision that our babies must be masked for safety and that parents must stay out of the schools for safety, I may have never come into myself. Sitting on that couch, in my pajamas, watching and screen recording the grainy video of my son and his classmates trying to perform while parents and grandparents tried to figure out how to mute themselves or being completely oblivious to the fact that they were unmuted, so now their screen noise took command of zoom, and suddenly I'm looking at the nose of a stranger who's trying to find their kid on the screen. Because the kids all have to be masked and socially distanced, so the camera being used couldn't even capture the entire class at once. The majority of the performance, half of the class, wasn't even visible on the screen. Pop-ups informed me of who was entering the video chat and who was leaving throughout the performance. Thank you, because I've had a small fire burning inside me for the past year or two, one that I've been trying to tamp down, suppress, be the calm to my husband's burning flame, be a good citizen, empathetic for other people's feelings. This milestone experience of our son being presented this way was what it took to pour gasoline on that small fire. As I watched our beautiful boy on this screen, I began to notice some things, like a mother does. Thankfully, he was close to the screen, and thanks to his dad, he was maskless, so I could easily read his facial expressions. Our son, who loves to sing and be silly, and most of all loves to have his parents undivided attention, seemed not himself. His hand motions were lackluster. He seemed anxious. He yawned three times. I know my son. I know his body language. He was going through the motions of what is required of him in the moment, but there was no heart there. I worried that something had happened to him. We asked him when he got home. He said that he wasn't sure if we were watching. He couldn't see us, couldn't see our support, and he couldn't see our love. How nice it was not to have to get dressed up and be bothered with the obnoxious social requirement to attend and remain in attendance for 15 whole minutes to support my child and show him my love. Thank you for taking that away from me, because now I'm angry. Do you remember when you were a kid and got to do that? Standing there with your class, anxiously scanning the crowd that had come to see you all perform, but looking only for the eyes of the ones that love you? Such a simple thing, and something that I took for granted. I took it for granted two, three years ago when my daughter was in kindergarten. I found the photos and the videos from that, and it made my heart break by the startling, startling differences. This is criminal. If parents want their children masked, then that is their choice, and I support them in that, even though I disagree. But the choice must be there. What you are taking from our children is much greater than what you are giving them. You are taking away their connections, their bodily autonomy, their individuality, their freedom. You are taking away their parents' authority by making it nearly impossible for us to have a say in what they wear and how they breathe. You are making so many parents choose between their ability to put food on the table or to comply with your unconstitutional mandates. And if the experimental jab is next up on your list of mandates for our babies, this fire will consume me, and we will make sure it consumes all of you along with it.
Thank you, Melissa.
Hello. I'm Elizabeth Urban, first-time speaker, parent of two Central children. We have had a lot of visitors from outside of Forest Hills Public Schools lately, so I thought this is a great opportunity to tell them and remind the rest of us how amazing our educators are. I cannot possibly list every wonderful thing about each teacher my boys have had, but I can give the following quick highlights, and we'll go fast, because I got a lot. One, Paige Gustafson. My oldest had her for both kindergarten and fourth. He loved having her bookend his stay, his lower elementary stay. She was a wonderful first and fourth teacher for him. Kelly Verberkmos helped my boy, who was quickly growing into a class clown, learn some self-control. He had a separate desk because choices, and she let him stay beside the books later, even after he'd earned time back, because he loved reading so much. Amy Bush and Jackie Turkot were a fabulous team for fifth grade. What a great year for growth. Kristen Green, my youngest had her in first, and she has a relative who is well-versed in trauma therapy. She brought her knowledge into the classroom and did not miss a beat with my youngest. She was unflappable. I hope you know what an incredible asset that woman is. Laura Gabbert, she taught virtual third grade last year. My son learned 12 feet from my desk at home, and I was more intimately involved in third grade in 2020 than I was in 1980-something. Laura's teaching in the most challenging of situations was absolutely outstanding. Special teachers, I love how passionate each is, both for their craft and their students. Their flexibility as they rotate through schools always impresses me, and I appreciate that Forest Hills Public Schools continues to embrace the arts. Speaking of arts, my oldest took woodworking this year. My husband has been trying to get him interested for years, but apparently Mr. Albert and his pancake, so it finally did the trick. This is a cutting board my son made. It is so smooth, I think it could be mistaken for a pillow. It is also a much more skilled piece than the butterdish I made when I was in middle school shop. Andrew Poole, who kept the Central Orchestra is not only going, but sounding amazing under impossible circumstances. Leslie Van Houten, I know she works between many schools and has more on her shoulders than I can begin to imagine, yet she handles it all with such grace and takes more with, more without batting an eyelash. Her willingness to go out of her way for my youngest has been so soothing for this mama's nervous and protective heart. Office staff so often go unnoticed, but everyone, especially the old Thornapple team of Carrie Sobek and Rhonda Postma, have been amazing for both of my boys. Lastly, I must say Patty Tolly for last. I didn't know her or of her, although she has a wonderful reputation that usually precedes her, until my oldest had her. I had an idea of what it'd be like when I heard literally from everyone who asked who we got, "Tolly, you are so lucky. He is going to have a great year," or, "Man, we're so jealous. We wanted Tolly," and they were all right. Patty's creativity is absolutely unparalleled. Never has my son been more engaged. He spent a year with that bounce in his step that you spoke of in the last meeting. If you ever have a chance to view her Grinch Holiday event, it is really impressive. She can bring out energy and creativity in the students like no one else.
Can you finish up?
Yes. I've done a disservice to other teachers that I couldn't mention, but I hope you know how amazing all of them are that my boys have had. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Holly DeVore. I think we'd all agree that the past 22 months has been one of us asking, what is going on? And I think it's just a series of events that have led us up to this point with masking our children, the vaccines that have been out there, and just some of the ridiculous mandates that we've been putting out, but nobody's stopping to ask questions, really. Operation Warp Speed with our military to deliver the first vaccines. States offering hamburgers, ice cream, and a chance to win million-dollar lottery just to be vaccinated, to companies paying their employees to be vaccinated, all the way to threatening employees to be vaccinated or to lose their jobs, all the way to 100 or more employees to be man, that, to be mandated to be vaccinated. Countries around the world that is not being shown on mainstream news media protesting in the streets, tons of thousands of people protesting in the streets, in Belgium, Paris, Germany, all around the world. Why isn't this being brought up? We're trusting the science, but what science are we trusting? We are in the middle of high flu season. According to the CDC, high flu season begins in October, and it runs high through December all the way to February. So by the time the masks come off in March, we're past high flu season. We're going to We're going to see a decline in numbers. That's the real science of this. And I love the fact that with this, we're pushing this virus, this Omicron, really, and the Delta, that kind of came and went and blew over. I mean, we're going to start naming everything after Greek letters of the alphabet to kind of push the scare, this fear factor into our thing. The questions we need to start asking is, what happens to our children when bacteria gets in their lungs from wearing the mask? There's the science question we need to ask. And as a board and as a school member, I would like to know if you are willing to sign a paper that would let parents know that if they have to wear a mask and their children are forced to wear the mask, then you can sign off on paying a life insurance policy if it brings a child to death because of a bacteria infection getting caught in their lungs, or you can pay the medical bills. If they wear a mask, sign the piece of paper, and then they can handle that as well. I don't think we're asking enough questions either, too. It's causing so much division among us, where we got this side and that side. We have people wearing masks, not wearing masks. We have people walking around afraid of going into stores, yet we have nobody following us around with a hand sanitizer anywhere we go, to a restaurant, to the bathrooms, setting my purse down on the floor in a bathroom, picking it up. There's no way. It's microscopic. But I just wanted to let you know that by the time this thing is over, we're going to look back on this and realize we didn't take the time to fight for our most precious commodity, and it is our children. It's a future generation for America.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mike Loyks, father of four children in the Forest Hills School District. I did want to bring attention to something that is on the Board of Education website, and it's under Section 2000. I think there's a, I don't know what you call it, an update, but there is a policy change, I believe, some sort of an area there in the Section 2000, and it's Item 6. So I didn't know if that was going to be covered tonight or not, but I'd like to just read it for those that haven't seen it. Again, this is on the Forest Hills Board of Education site, and it states, "The Board," I think it's a proposed recommendation or an ad here, "The Board delegates to the superintendent the authority to take action in circumstances not authorized by the Board, action or policy, when required to effectively maintain the district's day-to-day operations. The superintendent should promptly inform the Board of the action and the need for taking expedited action, and B, report the action to the Board at the Board's first meeting after the superintendent takes such action." I guess I have a lot of questions with that. I just assume the way, I don't know enough about how the Board is run, but it just concerns me delegating power in that way. I don't understand it. I think the community, there's obviously a lot of tension and a lot of questions that have come up to the Board, and I really hope this is addressed in a really straightforward, forward fashion. Because to be honest, it's really surprising to me to delegate that. I heard Mary even mentioned tonight that 99% of the things that have to happen, that Dan has to make those decisions. Well, or I don't know the words exactly, but you can see here, I wasn't exactly prepared to talk about this tonight, but I really felt like it was important to ask those questions. Whatever you think, please look at what's being written in your Board of Education documents. Take a look at them. I would just also invite anyone on either side that wants to talk to me about this. I'll be able to stay a little bit at the end. I realize that, I said this before, I know Dan and Mary often make a lot of comments at the end, which I do appreciate. The thing I'm surprised at is while it's not a conversation, I'm still very surprised that the others on the Board don't actually have comments at the end when the issues are certain issues, and it just really surprises me. If anyone could at least comment on this, I would appreciate it. If anyone here wants to talk to me, I'm happy to. I'll be at the back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Hola. Hola, everybody. Welcome to Ada Vista. My name is Diane Luke, and I'm the custodian here, and I want to do a 180 and just thank the Board for your support all school year and especially this holiday season. As I walk around school and talk to the staff like I normally do, I was just really shocked and surprised at how stressed they are. And like they feel more stressed this school year than last year, and that's why I was shocked and surprised. And so I just, again, want to thank you for all your support, and I ask the parents and the community members that to, whatever you can do to support, you know, all the schools and all the staff, it would be very much appreciated. These teachers are so dedicated to their jobs and dedicated to the students and, you know, wanting to do the best job that they can, and they are, but it's just so stressful for them, and so any support, you know, thank you or whatever. They always love treats, especially the donut kind. So anyway, I just wanted to say that, and again, welcome, everybody, and thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Hi, my name's Ian Pennan. Put my glasses on so I could read. This will be quick. I've had three kids go through Forest Hills, and I can tell you, they have certainly benefited from their education. I'm here with my friend Catherine to straight up support the Board. I want to thank you, especially Mary Vonnk for her 17 years of service in the district. Mary, please accept this token as a thank you of many, many parents who want to show their support for you and all you have done. Marty Atwater. Marty Atwater, you are the second in terms of time, I believe, per on the Board, and we would like to thank you for your 11 years also, for doing the best for all of our learners in our district. It is not easy, especially given these times. You've got kids, we have kids in this district with needs all over the Board. Who knew a few years ago we were going to be going through this pandemic that we're going, and keeping the kids in school the best that you can? We'd just like to thank you all, Board. We don't have flowers for all of you, but hang in there, and we will next year. Thank you so much.
My name is Nick Prill. I've got a couple bullets I want to talk about tonight. One, communication. I appreciate that you've hired Kyle. Was really sad to see that his first communication, though, was about the testing at the Fine Arts Center. There's a lot more important things going on that week that parents deserved consistent, timely communication in. Let's talk about the threats at Eastern. Two different emails from two different principals on the same campus telling the incident very differently, and also talking about what the policy is in the school very differently. So we have a communication problem, and I'm hoping that Kyle can fix that, seeing as nobody else has been able to. Further on to what Mike likes brought up, there's two spots in your consent agenda tonight that give Dan more power. And the issue I have with it, I agree with the spirit that there are decisions that need to be made on a day-to-day basis, that you guys as the Board can't be available to make those decisions. The issue I have with that is there's no time restriction on it. I understand that this comes from the $7,500 that you pay Trune Law Firm every year for them to write your policies, but I encourage you guys to break those out of the consent agenda and to have some discussion amongst yourselves on those. If that decision needs to be put in place to give Dan that power, great, but anything that he puts in place can only be valid up until the next school board meeting, at which point the Board would vote on it. Also, buried in that consent agenda, which I think is a very sneaky move to do, Mary, very sneaky, vaccine mandate for all staff buried in the consent agenda tonight. You wouldn't know it by looking at the agenda, it just says approval of Board policy. The last thing that you guys are going to be voting on tonight that I wanted to touch on is the agreement for contract amendments. I think it's great to take some of that extra money that Dan was struggling to figure out how to spend and to be giving it to the employees that have worked so hard. I would ask somebody on the Board to make a motion to just take out the last sentence that says, "on a prorated basis determined by FTE." You have a lot of people that are classified as part-time or that are not quite at the 40 hours, that bust their asses for our kids and are dedicated every day, and to diminish their efforts by a simple calculation, not cool. Just take that out, give everybody across the Board the 1,200 bucks. Easy to do, right? Mary, I got to tell you, you think the recall is your biggest problem? I have a stack of violations of the Open Meetings Act, and thank you for giving me two more of them tonight, because I will be filing those after the first of the year. And Dan, you have zero power to mandate masks.
Please wrap up, Nick.
Remember MCL 380.10? Fuck around and find out. We're not playing anymore. Let's go branded.
Hi, I'm Colleen Fueeling, and I live in Ada. I'm saddened and disgusted by the blatant racism and bigotry of Summoner District. Those who are determined to oust the entire Board of Education and replace Dan Beam have only their own agendas in mind, and it is harmful to our children and society at large. These people would like to do away with imperative programs such as SEL, Social Emotional Learning, mindset, skills, attitudes, and feelings that help students succeed in school and life. It also teaches self-awareness, something that seems to be severely lacking in those who are intent on taking down our public school district and rebuilding it to their liking. Learning how to identify and manage our own emotions. A program that a teacher literally just emphasized tonight is needed. I have to ask myself, and I'm sure many are asking themselves, aside from the blatantly obvious politicizing by the extreme far-right, why do these people want to ban teaching children how to identify their emotions? They would like to ban any talk of race, equity, equality, diversity, inclusion. Why would they want to squash inclusion? Why would they want to discourage the beautiful diversity we have in our community, which is about more than just race? It is also about embracing our LGBTQ+ community. It is about embracing those with disabilities. It is about embracing all of our beautiful differences. Is it because that group would like to exclude anyone who doesn't fit into their box of white, straight, nuclear family? Why are they so afraid for their children to learn about other cultures, ethnicities, and races? What I am hearing is that they are afraid that they are being victimized. Privileged, white, upper-middle-class people claim that they are being marginalized, likening themselves to victims of the Holocaust or victims who have actually experienced real racism and real segregation. This is all false and categorically incorrect. It also undermines the existence of anyone who does not fit into their vision of what families and individuals should look like or think. This is the season of joy, of giving, and of love. What I am seeing from those who are determined to destroy our district is the opposite of that. Those who feel their freedoms are at risk seem to be the ones the most determined to take away freedoms of others, to be who they are and feel accepted, promoting the most discourse and hate in the community, the most determined to suppress anyone who is not like them. I have to wonder why they want to squash individuality, squash teaching children how to identify and manage their emotions, squash talking about people and families that are different than their own. The only answer that I can come up with is that they do not truly care about the children. They are focused on ridiculous first-world problems. There are real problems our children are facing: mental health, safety during a pandemic, safety from guns in schools. On behalf of a majority of the Forest Hills Public School District, we appreciate all you do as a Board, and especially the amazing programs we have in our district. Keep up the great work of doing what is best for all children. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to take advantage of public comments?
My name is Paul Doyle, and as many of you know, I recently became a bus driver for Forest Hills. I began the process back on September 9th. Roughly two months were required to apply for the position, to have my application be processed, to be accepted as a new hire, to complete the new hire process, including fingerprinting, taking a medical exam, being drug-tested, and completing a series of general human resources training modules. All of this was so that I could actually start the process of training as a bus driver. I completed my training and took and passed the skills and road test on Tuesday, November 2nd. On Wednesday, November 3rd, I started driving full-time. I drive about 64, and on this past Friday, I finished six and a half weeks of driving full-time. These three and a half months have been difficult because I was doing this not out of a need for work, but instead out of a desire to help. My intentions were to be part of a solution rather than risking becoming part of the problem. Going through this process challenged me in many ways. There was a lot to learn, much more than I ever could have imagined or expected. It required me to make adjustments personally and professionally, as well as to make many sacrifices, including significant financial sacrifices. Now, while what I've listed sounds like a lot, it's not really been all that bad or all that difficult. What has been bad and difficult has been the last two weeks. Two weeks ago, I attended a meeting that was intended to be an event where members of the community could come together to identify common ground and work toward a set of shared objectives. While I intended with high hopes and optimism, what I experienced was exactly the opposite of everything the event was meant to be. Stephanie Boone and her associates verbally assaulted me. They questioned my motives, my actions, and my character. What I saw was ugly and vulgar. After about an hour of this, I volunteered to leave because I did not want to be the thing that stood in the way of the important and good work that must be done. I was followed out of the building by one of Ms. Boone's group named Paul, and he proceeded to scream hate-filled threats at Mr. Beam and Mrs. Vonnk, which I was told to convey to them. I was then called terrible things expressed in that same screaming voice filled with hate and rage. The following day, I filed a police report with the Kent County Sheriff's Office. Over the last several weeks, I've been accused of many things and called many things. I've been called a pawn, a puppet, an agent, and a spy. At these board meetings, I've been described as a successful entrepreneur and a problem solver. Diane, privately, you've characterized me as one of the best thinkers you've ever met. So if you'll allow me, I'm going to share just a bit of what I think. I think our district has real problems, very real problems. Transportation is one example. We have work to do. We need to find a way to solve this problem and use the process of doing so to set a pattern for future work. I also believe our school district and our Board and our superintendent are under attack by people with ideological and political motives. I believe our community needs to come together to work in a healthy and constructive manner lest we let a radical minority spoil our opportunity for a better future. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Would anybody else like to partake in public comments? Okay. We will continue on with our meeting. Oh.
My name is Stephanie Boone. Christmas is the celebration of the birth of Jesus Christ. As we are all in the middle of the hustle and bustle of the Christmas season, we are all also watching our childhood memories of Christmas traditions be all but canceled in our children's schools. I thought it might be nice to give a little reminder to every- I thought it might be nice to give a little reminder to everyone here about what the U.S. Constitution says regarding Christmas and public schools. Public schools may display religious symbols in school calendars and displays during Christmas. Christmas and Hanukkah are celebrated as cultural, national, and religious holidays, and there is simply no constitutional doctrine which would forbid schoolchildren from sharing in that celebration so long as there is no denominational preference given. Christmas carols with religious themes are allowed to be sung at school events and holiday programs, and limiting the use of a religious piece of music is tattamount to censorship and is not required or condoned by the Constitution. Public schools can teach about the biblical origins of Christmas, so long as the purpose is to study the historical or literary significance of the biblical passages. Additionally, students are free to discuss the biblical origins of the Christmas holiday with other students, and are free to write about the origin of Christmas and the birth of Jesus Christ, as that is their First Amendment right. Public schools are under no constitutional obligation to rename the Christmas holiday. The Supreme Court itself has acknowledged with approval that Congress gives federal employees a paid holiday on December 25th and calls that holiday Christmas. Any school canceling the use of the name Christmas is doing so by choice. So I'd just like to know, why does FHPS move away from the word Christmas? I would just like an answer for that. I'm pretty sure most of you will go home to celebrate Christmas with your families this week, and I want you to know that you do not have to be content with the cancellation of Christmas in our schools. When did you ever ask the community if that's what we all wanted? I'd like to invite you all to join me at the Lowell VFW Hall, 3124 Alden Nash Road, tomorrow, December 21st at 5:00 PM. We will have Big Red's food truck on site, you can sign the recall petitions there, and we will have a lineup of awesome speakers fighting to keep Christmas alive in our schools. Hope to see you all there. Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Stephanie.
I've got five kids, four of whom have attended and/or graduated from FHPS over the years. I'm currently homeschooling my youngest, thankfully. I am absolutely unfounded that at the beginning of this event tonight, I heard an educator tell us that students can do without as much content, educational content during the school day, because they can't just, they can just go home and Google it. Are you kidding me right now? I just can't even, I can't even imagine that that's the opinion of an educator. This district, along with others, is already dumbing down the content in the name of equity and inclusion. After all, it doesn't, it doesn't, it makes perfect sense, doesn't it, to take away opportunities from students who benefit greatly from those programs in order to keep equity in our education? To take opportunities away from some in order to give an imaginary boost to others, when in reality, taking away opportunities and challenging programs from some does nothing to benefit anyone else. It may give the illusion that all children or students have equal opportunities, but that's just not the case. When you've got a child that needs challenge, to take those challenges away from those students is just criminal, in my opinion. And to say that we can take a half an hour out of class time and focus on, I don't know, anti-racism, or what it means to be an oppressive white person in society, or to tell our children of color, of which I'm a parent of one such student, to tell them that they're oppressed by their white counterparts in schools is just absolutely insane. And you are absolutely lying to your district when you tell people that programs like SEI, or SEL, DEI, DLI, all the little acronyms you want to use are anything other than CRT in disguise. It just is. So, and I don't disagree that the kids need some degree of ability to help, but it needs to be modeled, not necessarily taught. So, anyway, I was appalled to hear that a teacher tell a group of parents that we can just Google our children's education. Let me just tell you, homeschooling's a wonderful way to go. We don't Google our children's education, we actually teach them, and we teach them history and math and science and reading and all those good things at home where we can be in charge of our kids' education.
Thank you, Janet.
I'm Janelle Miles, and I am a parent of two children who go to Ada Vista Elementary here. We love it, we fought to get them in here, we waited a long time at Orchard View, which was amazing and wonderful also. But this is our place, this is our family, and so glad to be here with my friends. So, my main point today is to underscore the need for more counselors in schools, all schools. We need counselors in schools, we need, kids are struggling, I think, you know, the word apple doesn't fall too far from the tree. Adults are stressed out about small things, they're not seeing the big picture, and it's making the kids stressed out. And I know this, because I'm an English teacher too, at the high school, not in Forest Hills, but, and often, I am the first responder. I have referred so many children this year. I've done CPS referrals because of what's going on at home, and I know that's not something we can control as educators, other than we can give them a safe space, right? Maslow's hierarchy of needs tells us that if a child is not safe, if they're not fed well and they're not safe, they cannot learn. So we do need kids to feel safe in their homes. Among all the news we've had recently, the comments I'm hearing tonight, we need to come together for our children in our homes, and I know at the Board of Education, that's, you know, we're here for education, but we can help, and your teachers are the first responders, and we need more counselors, we need a better ratio of master's degree counselors, like not like behavior specialists, or, you know, we need people, and then we need people who look like our kids too, right? Like, I know that that's probably like a law, that you can't, you know, hire someone based on what they look like, but if you can take into effect their background and what they, their experiences they've had. Anyway, underscoring our counselors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Janelle.
I'm a student at Forest Hills Northern High School, and I'd like to take a moment to thank this wonderful staff and board for all they've done for me. They have helped me out, I felt comfortable knowing that I have counselors behind my back whenever I need them, and that I can feel comfortable speaking out to the board and to the educators, to really anybody that I need to speak to. And Mary Bonk and Superintendent Beam have been very helpful to me, along with Deputy Dunabek, and plenty of others, but they're the people I see here today, who I'd like to thank first and foremost. Throughout my experiences, I have not had any feeling of being discriminated toward my religion. I'm Muslim, and I feel that Northern, since that's not where I've experienced, but I feel that the district is very inclusive, in my experience at least, and some of my friends have told me. So I'd like to take a moment to just thank you all, and thank you for giving me the time to do that.
Thank you so much for being with us, Ricky.
Thank you to the board for agreeing to share my insights and concerns tonight. My hope is that this board will make responsible, educated, and informed decisions, taking into account history and a scientific data-driven approach to school policies moving forward. Famed American philosopher George Sartreana once wrote, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." The last truly worldwide pandemic we faced was over 100 years ago, when the Spanish Flu spread around the globe in 1918. In 2008, after extensive evaluation of samples of lung tissues from victims of the Spanish Flu, Dr. Anthony Fauci, Director of the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Diseases, authored an article which concluded that the vast majority of people who died did so from bacterial pneumonia from wearing masks, rather than from the Spanish Flu itself. This conclusion is supported by the recent study of face masks whereby a group of parents in Gainesville, Florida sent six face masks to a lab at the University of Florida, requesting an analysis of contaminants found on new or freshly laundered masks after they had been worn for an average of just 5.7 hours in one day, most during in-person schooling by children ages 6 through 11. The resulting report found that five masks were contaminated with bacteria, parasites, and fungi, including three with dangerous pathogenic and pneumonia-causing bacteria. Half of the masks were contaminated with one or more strains of pneumonia-causing bacteria; one-third were contaminated with one or more strains of meningitis-causing bacteria; one-third were contaminated with dangerous antibiotic-resistant bacterial pathogens. In addition, less dangerous pathogens were identified, including pathogens that can cause fever, ulcers, acne, yeast infections, strep throat, periodontal disease, Rocky Mountains body, spotted fever, and more. Indeed, the effectiveness of masks to prevent the spread of an airborne respiratory virus has been well-known for many years. In Dr. Fauci's recently released February 5th, 2020 email response, at the very beginning of the pandemic in the United States, to Sylvia Burwell, who served as Secretary of Health and Human Services from 2014 to 2017, he wrote, quote, "Masks are really for infected people to prevent them from spreading infection to people who are not infected, rather than protecting uninfected people from acquiring infection. The typical mask you buy at the drugstore is not really effective in keeping out virus, which is small enough to pass through the material. It might, however, provide some slight benefit in keeping out gross droplets if someone coughs or sneezes on you. I do not recommend that you wear a mask. Let's hope we are all capable of remembering the past to make better, more informed decisions moving forward. Thank you."
Can you please share your name?
Due to the excessive doxing and death threats, I will not be releasing my name.
Thank you.
My name is Greg King. I wasn't planning on talking, but I've had three kids go through Forest Hills Schools, and I just wanted to say that there's good books out there, but they're being withheld. People are canceling them. One person, Robert F. Kennedy Jr., has just come out with his book, The Truth About Fauci. I recommend everybody try to get it. It's hard to get around the local stores, you'll have to get it from Amazon probably, if they are still giving it out, but it's a good book to learn about what is going on here, and just, I wish everybody would just wake up about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
My name's Emily. I am a parent, and I live in the community, and I'm also a bus driver. But I just want to say, there was a great man that once said that we must learn to live together as brothers and sisters, or perish together as wolves. I would love to see unity in our communities. There's a lot of very strong opinions, and I just, the kids see that, they hear that, and if they could see the adults come together and listen to each other and act like adults, that would be a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Paul Ladler. I'm the Paul that Paul was speaking of earlier. Just wanted to shed some light on the events of the last couple of weeks as well, from my perspective. We were part of an initiative that Sarah Easter was so graciously willing to put together for a pretty fairly large group of individuals representing multiple perspectives in matters at hand. We met twice. The first meeting, I thought, went incredibly well. There was a lot of sharing of personal perspectives, development of a safe space for us to come together as adversaries when we started. We made tremendous strides over about a four-hour period that first evening. We were all very empowered, looking forward to the second meeting, until we found out that our efforts were subverted from, well, before the meeting actually started, when Mary, you visited Sarah to invoke some sort of influence over a three-hour period before our meeting. Not sure what your intention was there, but I did find that out later. The second meeting, Paul came on board. Wasn't sharing off-the-top a whole lot of information, but I've got some information that I was hoping he would have shared that night, about his interests, his personal interests, financial gain, et cetera. And I'm curious, I'll make a formal inquiry in writing as to this effect later, but I do have in front of me a record from the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs that denotes an entity called Profitexure LLC, of which Paul Doyle is the principal. I also have in front of me a Forest Hills Public Schools check register, AP check register. On two occasions, the summer of 2017, check number 276079 and check number 276469, dated 7/20 and 6/22 respectively. Profitexure LLC received payment in the amount of $45,000, a $15,000 check and a $30,000 check. I'm curious about what values were delivered by Profitexure LLC in those transactions, and I'm more curious to know if any of Mr. Doyle's other entities, like FHN Rowing, Maximus Strategies, Modern Management Solutions, DFS Linkages, et cetera, and so on, and so on, and so forth, have any pending value to the district in which he might be paid as a contractor, a vendor, or supplier of any services or products?
Thank you, Paul.
In addition to his bus services.
As you addressed a question that pertains to me, the way that that meeting came about is Sarah Easter called me and said, "I have a friendship with Stephanie, we have history, and we think we can bring the board, the superintendent, and two sides, for lack of a better term, to the table to have discussion." We were asked, "Who should be at that table?" And I blatantly said, "I don't think they want me there anymore, so we will reach out to three other ones. If they want me there, I'm happy to attend." So Sarah called me several times, trying to find, that's 100% what happened, and I gave her several members of the supporters' community, so be advised, that is the chain of events that led to Sarah and my discussion. So would anybody else like to participate in public comments this evening, or shall we move on to our consent grouping? Okay, we are moving on to our consent grouping. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a motion to approve?
So sorry about that. I moved that the board approved consent grouping items 6A through D this evening.
Hi, Sacca. Are there any items in the consent grouping that any board member would like to call out for special consideration? Are there any items superintendent B and E would like to call to our attention this evening?
Just to note that we are making recommendations for approved amendments to Board of Education policies. Also, we are pleased to present to the board agreements to make adjustments with our employee bargaining groups to add additional compensation for their additional heroic work this year. Those additional monies do not come from any federal funds.
Okay. Mrs. Milos Gregory, would you like to proceed with our business report this evening?
Yep, it's pretty short. We had a payment of November bills that went on. We also need the approval on a second-year contract approval from Absolute Software through CDW. This software is used as an endpoint device for management protection and location of mobile devices. Last year, we approved this as a board for 1,350 new devices. So it allows us to locate those devices if taken out of the state, if lost, and it happens a lot according to our tech department. So that comes from our general fund for $29,000. The second one is a property tax refund from two Ada Township for $522.62. And then in the background kind of floating around is there going to be doing the instruction highlight or the curricular, excuse me, highlight. If everyone, you know, just take a look over there, here and there, Northern High School has pretty much completed their construction updates. So John Gregory was nice enough to take some photos for us. School was done last Friday, so I think he cleaned up a little bit. It looks great. I was like, "How did you do that?" But this is the kind of the main area. And anyone who's been to some of the meetings kind of previously, you can, this middle area was two separate buildings, or, and it was like a grassy area in the middle. So we repurposed it to a main section that is a media area as well, a common space for learning. And there's multiple in here as well. There's a science area, industrial, tech area, there's a arts area too. So I think Julie's just going to be flipping through those a little bit as we continue our meetings tonight. But it's nice to see that some of the work we've been talking about for a long time that we've, you know, gotten to a point. I actually don't know what we use those for, but I'm going to have to ask John on that. They're, it's a great picture. I saw them, like, I'm not sure what they use those for, but I'm sure it's for some type of creation. But yeah, it's great to see all the work that we've been doing. Julie, thank you for all the work you've been planning. I know you talked tonight about some of the planning here. Those are things you can expect, I know, here relatively soon, so thank you. And that's it.
Any questions for Mrs. Milos Gregory? Mrs. Atwater, would you like to go ahead with our instruction report this evening?
I would love to, and we had some exciting stuff to talk about. Thanks. I don't know what the feedback is all about for tonight, but yeah, we had our regular monthly meeting last week as well, beginning with Jewish updates. And I just wanted to say, I'm particularly excited about the fact that our students are in Project Next are now enjoying that completed project at Northern. That was very exciting to see. We were sorry, unfortunately Scott was absent for personal reasons on Wednesday, and our thoughts are with him and his family. But Kim did a great job with the meeting in his stead. We started with the wonderful, continuously enthusiastic Natalie Weiss, who presented information, and she was, actually she is, she presented information on K5 Math Workshops. Natalie is one of our instructional coaches, and she's helping to bring some of our curricular resources really to life. She's motivated by the quote that, I want to make sure I get it right, "There should be no such thing as boring mathematics." Living that quote, she reached out to teachers and principals about the creation of a math workshop collaborative. This group is applying to math, the same structure and the model that we have, that our teachers and our students are already familiar with in reading and writing. So using the workshop model, they are familiar with things like the mini lesson and student work time inquiry, sharing, reflection, and applying it in the math setting. So as we know, it's incredibly powerful to have teacher leaders in using new methodologies, new modalities, and in teaching and in leading changes. We have teachers across the district who are involved in this collaborative and who are inspired and building capacity together. Like so many of our teachers, they really truly are inspired and they're already taking this in their classroom. They're doing the work after school, as so many of our things have had to happen this year because of sub shortages, and it's inspiring to me and just reinforces how wonderful and amazing our teachers are to be doing this work after the workday, after their long workday is already done. They're conducting learning walks, they're expanding interest in this approach throughout the district. Natalie's also going to be providing professional learning in our January Professional Learning Day to build even more capacity. This work takes resources that we already have and it makes them more effective. And even better, differentiation is very effective in this model. So far from taking away challenges from our kids, far from dumbing down content or taking anything away, this is adding. This is providing teachers to meet students where they are, whether they are at middle of the spectrum, opposite ends, whatever. They meet them where they are. It allows teachers to focus on the must-dos of the day in their math curriculum, and it frees them up to permit daily may-dos for those who are able to do more. So this is the kind of program that we, the Dance Vision, that we as a district are really trying to give value added to what we already have, and I love just seeing our teachers collaborate to do this. It's exciting work. Tamasha also was at the meeting and gave us an update. She has completed a round of cultural intelligence training, which was attended by a very good mix of teachers and administrators. Again, this training took place after school, so for teachers and administrators to choose to come helped us with the sub shortage. We are grateful to them and we appreciate all of our staff for participating in these opportunities in a way that helps our students most by letting our teachers and administrators be in the buildings during the school day. So Kim in Scottstead gave us a report on the AP Technology, I'm sorry, AP Psychology textbook and digital resources. Currently, we have outdated resources in our AP Psych classes for this course, so with our teachers to determine the best update to those resources, they decided that they really liked the textbook they have. So what we are going to do is simply update from, I think, the first edition to now the third edition. That's how long we've had that same textbook, and adding digital resources that didn't exist with the first one. Because this is an update of an approved resource, a 30-day review is required. Finally, we did review requests for supplemental instructional resources. Those are Ada Elementary would like to use Skeleton Creek by Patrick Carman for use in ELA fourth-grade classes. Central Middle School seeks approval of The Watson's Go to Birmingham by Christopher Paul Curtis, and that is for seventh-grade ELA. And Central High School wants to use Harry Potter and the Sorcerer's Stone by J.K. Rowling. This is not for an ELA class, so, you know, for those who like Harry Potter in high school, this is for their cinema course. So we are looking at those three requests. We also discussed iStation. This is an online innovation program for right here at Ada Vista. It is to take the place of a now outdated resource that is no longer being supported. This inadvertently was actually listed on the agenda with the other three book requests. However, it is not a book, it does not even meet the threshold for finance to have considered, and it is not a permanent replacement of anything. It is a temporary resource while our staff evaluates what's the best permanent replacement going to be. So no 30-day review is necessary, and the good news about that is that the students here at Ada Vista will have this resource ready for them when they return from break. Our action items then are just to approve the minutes of our November 10, 2021 meeting, and we recommend 30-day review of Skeleton Creek by Patrick Carman for use at Ada Elementary, The Watson's Go to Birmingham by Christopher Paul Curtis for use at Central Middle School, and Harry Potter and the Sorcerer's Stone by J.K. Rowling for use at Central High School. That's my report.
Wonderful report. Any questions for Mrs. Atwater? And would you like to go ahead into your information items this evening, please?
Yes, I've just approved one resignation at the end of the semester.
Well, you might as well go right ahead into your board communications, I mean, your, I'm sorry, superintendent's report.
All right, I think, yes. Oh, you know, that's right.
I'm so sorry. Could I please have a roll call though?
I will. Thank you to all the people here tonight. Thank you to our community's participation. I would much rather have a board meeting filled with community members where we can come together and share our views than not. So thank you all for being here tonight. I'd like to go through as best I can to respond where I can. Not every comment was something that was requested in response. About the letter I wrote in June of 2020 about two pandemics, I stand by that letter. No qualms with that. I'm not trying to be political in any way, but certainly trying to acknowledge, again, the twin pandemic, the obvious virus one that we're dealing with, and the scourge of racism that's impacted far too many centuries in our country. But I'm hopeful we're making progress on both and committed to that as an educator. In terms of safety and security, beginning and really being on a proactive front, I couldn't agree more. And more importantly, as this issue has been studied with two national reports issued by the United States Department of Secret Service, that's exactly what they recommend as well. Schools are not fortresses, but they're communities of people. And as I met with the prosecuting attorney and the sheriff and the sheriff's department command staff and all the police chiefs from Kent County, I was reminded that it's not law enforcement that keeps communities safe, it's communities that keep communities safe. That's what all the law enforcement people said, and it goes to our shared responsibility to one another. The brotherhood and sisterhood that we can create, the sense of community and neighborliness that we can create are important because they help us help one another. We all can go through difficult times, we can have difficult challenges that we're dealing with, and the more that we have a community that is interwoven with a stronger fabric of relationships, not only the healthier that community is, but also the safer that community is. That's the main findings from the U.S. Department of Secret Service, excuse me, the United States Secret Service, now part of the Department of Homeland Security, but also from study after study after study on this issue. So we are certainly looking at the additional federal dollars that we have to help with things like counseling with our students. We're blessed that we have guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, mental health liaisons that help, and an amazing team of teachers who are with our students each day. But it's also our bus drivers, our custodians, our front office staff, our food service staff, people who see our kids and care for our community's children day in and day out. And our school resource officers, our risk assessment processes that we have, anytime there's a reason to believe someone may be a potential harm to themselves or others, we move with dispatch with that process. And our relationship with our broader community, our mental wellness and mental health care community, our provider community from pediatricians' offices to ongoing relationships we have with Pine Rest and Spectrum Health and West Michigan Health and Mercy Health as well, all play a huge role. In terms of the amount of content that we have, so our Michigan academic standards have been in place for over a decade now, adopted by the state legislature and have been readopted and reaffirmed several times since then, and also changes made to the Michigan merit curriculum at the high school level by our state legislature. But what is consistent in that is that it takes about having kids in high school until age 23 to get through all of the content standards. So what teachers talk about is this sort of pointing a fire hose of content at kids and saying, "Here you go, drink." And so the issue is really the quality of learning that's taking place and not just a fire hose of content that kids memorize in short-term memory for six months or six weeks and then don't retain that for the long term. We know what results in long-term sticky learning and skill development, and that really helps when we apply the things that we're learning rather than just sitting in a seat and having someone talk to us because there's so much content that we have to get to. So it's not about reducing rigor, it's not about telling kids that they're bad or they're some sort of oppressor or anything like that. It's about providing kids with a great quality learning experience, and our teachers are dedicated to that day in and day out. You heard a piece, the first I've heard tonight about a paper shortage, we'll certainly look into that. We have no shortage of paper. We try to do things as smartly as we can with digital content, but there's no substitute for paper in many areas, and I've seen that myself as I've substitute taught in classrooms this year. So we'll certainly make sure we've got paper for our staff. Regarding our bus drivers, we're so very grateful for them. We have challenges in our transportation area in our district and throughout the country. We have a new supervisor as well as a director. Our director has been on medical leave after a knee surgery, and he has been working remotely. Our supervisor has been standing in, and the position of our supervisor, we are out looking for a great person to fill that position as a specialist in the office. The bus washer job that we have, most districts have bus drivers wash their own bus when they need to. We're grateful to have a bus washing bay, but we're also grateful to provide extra work to any bus driver who wants it, to wash other people's buses on that. We have increased the rate of pay. Those are things that we work with our transportation supervisor in our operations department to make sure that we're meeting the needs. It's important for longevity and safety to have a clean exterior. We have lots of road salt in Michigan, so we want to deal with that so we don't have corrosion, because corrosion is a red tag issue, and we have our buses randomly inspected by the Michigan Department of State Police on the school bus inspection program. And it's also important to keep our buses clean for visibility purposes. We are still looking to do a deeper dive into this bigger challenge of what we need to do to transport our kids on school buses, it's a safe and efficient form of communication. But there's more that we need to do to attract more people to these important positions to say thank you to all the people who are doing that work now. And we're in an incredibly competitive environment. I have my manual given to me from our school bus driver trainers for me to sit for a CDL exam and then go through many of those steps, and it's part of my holiday reading. And we're trying to work through all of that. Some of these things are government regulation, but where we can make things more attractive and less onerous internally, I want to do that. And I'm committed to talking to our recent hires, our experienced bus drivers, and our transportation leadership team on anything we can do to help, not only with a national problem, but to make it easier for all of our community. It has been no fun. I've been in those drop-off and pickup lines myself, dropping my kids off. I know it's no fun, it's not efficient, and we just need to continue to redouble our efforts in this area. I thank everyone who stepped forward thus far, but there's still continued work to be done. Thank you Ada Vista for hosting us. Somos una familia, a great model. I'm convinced that, I've written this many times before as well, that children can lead the way. If we're in a quandary about what we need to do, stop by a kindergarten classroom or first-grade classroom, they usually set me straight all the time and just watching them and being in their presence. And we will absolutely continue to support language immersion. We know that the best time to learn a second language is we're learning a first language, and research is very clear on that. We're grateful for everyone who works hard on our Spanish immersion program and our Mandarin Chinese immersion program. These are real gems for our community and the district. We will continue with COVID to follow the science. The science continues to... The science continues to, uh, emerge and evolve as we go forward. It's great to see some peer-reviewed studies out there now. One of the challenges though, as we talk to many scientists in this area, is that, uh, things keep emerging. There's complexity that is here. Uh, it's not ethical to do randomized trials, uh, with people when there's, uh, a, a, a potentially, uh, life-threatening virus circulating. So we're continuing to do that. We're, we're really focusing locally. We've got a lot of great medical, uh, scientists locally with, uh, our own Benando Institute, uh, with, uh, our teaching hospitals here in town and people who are committed to this work, uh, and lots of people who live in our own community who work in these fields, who send their children to our schools as well. Um, I'm so sorry to hear about, uh, the issue with the video stream and the music program. Uh, we have been hosting more and more live in-person music, uh, presentations. We do have, we're blessed with facilities to be able to spread out and do that. And I will look to see what we can do to make sure more and more of that can happen live and in person. Uh, I know many kids are disappointed. My now-sixth-grade daughter continues to remind me that she didn't have the chance to do the traditional fifth-grade music performance. Uh, and, and we continue to move forward. We know there've been many, uh, aspects of this pandemic that have taken away things that we all have looked forward to and things that kids have longed for. Uh, but we can also figure out how to adapt and make sure that, um, we can provide those opportunities and do it in a way where, uh, we're adapting to the science and mitigating risks that may be out there. Uh, thank you to those who are supporting our educators. I, I will, uh, also just add my own echo the observation that, uh, we, we have great educators who have been doing heroic work. Uh, we have, uh, we teach about 500,000 lessons in a school year. When you add up all the classrooms and the grade levels and all the content standards, uh, and our teachers have been working extremely hard on all of that and all of our staff and helping in so many ways in all the different hats that they wear. Uh, this semester that we just concluded Friday, uh, has been the most challenging semester of my educational career. And I've talked to many longtime educators and they, they echo that. We need to come together. We need to lean on one another and support one another, find where we have common ground and work forward from that. Uh, and, and continue to, uh, try to provide a, a selfless approach so our kids can thrive. I think the thing we can agree on is that this is about kids. Uh, I have no problem, and I've said to many people in, in many of the past several months, if I'm in the way of kids thriving, I have no problem stepping down, uh, and doing something else so that kids can thrive. Uh, I'm committed, uh, to make sure that kids do very well and I appreciate everyone who, uh, supports our educators during these difficult times. It's not been easy for parents, educators, community members, anyone. And we just need to give one another grace and, uh, support one another as best we can, knowing that there are days where I've got the extra energy to support someone else and then there's a next day where I need someone to help me on that. And that's, that's the world that we're in at this point in time. Um, about delegating authority to the superintendent in board policy, our board policy does outline the vast majority of, uh, practices, uh, and processes that we need to have in the district. Uh, where there may be a situation where there's a policy that doesn't speak to that, some of our policies are crafted narrowly. Some of them are crafted more broadly, uh, but where it doesn't speak to that, it does, uh, ask the superintendent not just to sit on his or her hands waiting until the next board meeting to craft policy, but to make the best decision at that point in time, especially, uh, if safety, uh, or security or, uh, some other emergent need, uh, needs to be considered. Um, I echo again, uh, and, and thank you to our custodians here at Ada Vista all across the district, uh, and the observation from our custodian here, just to support our schools and the staff absolutely. Uh, a little note, uh, don't underestimate, uh, the wind that that can provide in someone's sails. Um, in our consent agenda about the, uh, vaccine mandate for all staff, what we have is a policy that is not, uh, taking effect because right now there is a court stay on the OSHA requirement, uh, that was just lifted by the Court of Appeals and now is being appealed to the Supreme Court. Uh, we don't know what the Supreme Court will do at this point in time, but what this policy does in the event that the OSHA rule is declared lawful, it prescribes, uh, the process that we need to follow as a district related to that OSHA rule. So we know that that is, uh, at the United States Supreme Court level now. Uh, this is just having that in place in the event that that, uh, is ruled lawful or constitutional, that we have procedures in place. If it's, uh, deemed unconstitutional, that policy will be null and void. Um, certainly want to continue to support a school and community where all are welcome, uh, where we can say Merry Christmas freely, where we can point out all the Christmas trees that we have all over the district and explain what those are. We haven't canceled Christmas in this district. We want to include everyone, no? Uh, so we want to hear for people that don't practice, uh, the Christian religion, uh, to hear about their, uh, high holy days as well. So, uh, that's important to building, uh, kids who can grow up to be adults and interact with people, uh, all around the world. Uh, we know our, our largest employer right here in the district is a global company in Amway and they're fully supportive of making sure that we have kids who can competently perform as adults, uh, all around the world without sacrificing their own personal beliefs as well. So we think we can educate people about other beliefs without people having to erode their own personal beliefs. So Merry Christmas, everyone. Um, I agree with all the statements that we need to find ways for our community to come together. I certainly, uh, would echo that, uh, uh, we can do great things when we come together and we've shown that many, many, many times over our history as a community and, and society in general. Uh, we have made no attempts to remove the word Christmas. Uh, certainly, uh, the need to underscore counselors in our schools, uh, that this is a piece that we, uh, are looking at through, uh, the federal dollars that are available to help alleviate, uh, the harmful effects of the pandemic. And that's something that we'll be engaging with our community more and our staff members more as one aspect of the things that we need to do to make sure we're helping all of our kids because we know the pandemic has produced, uh, academic gaps and we're looking to address those, but it's also produced, uh, other mental health challenges. And we want to be able to mitigate those challenges. Maslow's hierarchy of needs is right on target here. Kids cannot learn if there are other things that are, uh, needs that are impacting them, whether that be hunger or safety or anxiety, uh, or depression or things like that. That's going to stand in the way of the academic learning that we want all kids to achieve as well. Uh, thank you to our students. It's great to have our students here at our board meetings, uh, and sharing their perspectives. I very much enjoyed, uh, spending time with our student advisory council and hearing their viewpoints as well, uh, going forward. Uh, thank you again for those expressing a need for unity and learning to live together. Couldn't agree more. Uh, about, uh, Mr. Doyle's work in the district, Mr. Doyle has helped us previously with our entrepreneurship program and trying to bring more entrepreneurship to our classrooms and our schools. And he provided, uh, some of that help in the past. I don't know if those are the entities where payments were made to, but that's what, uh, is quickly in my head. Uh, but we can certainly look into that, uh, on that piece. Um, that's response to comments that came tonight. Thanks to Ada Vista for hosting us here tonight. Uh, very much appreciate that during this, uh, first week of a break for staff and students, uh, I know on that. My wife asked me tonight, um, before I left her with my nine-year-old and 11-year-old, I just stopped and think about that, uh, get those ages right. She said, uh, when does school start again? And I said, that's why they say that in that one song, you know? Um, it's beginning with a lot like Christmas and when do the kids go back to school is what mom and dad are thinking. So, uh, that was her first day of break. I still need to catch up on that. I'm sure she will catch me up, uh, when I get home later tonight on the kid's first day of break. Um, just a little bit of update on ESSR. So ESSR is another one of these acronyms. I apologize, we have so many in our field of education, but, uh, this comes to us from our friends in the federal government. ESSR stands for the Elementary and Secondary Education Rescue Fund or Relief Fund, I believe, the O.R.'s Relief Fund. Um, and this is where we received one-time federal dollars to mitigate the effects of the pandemic. Uh, we are still looking to engage our staff members more. We've started to do that. Our administrators, our students, our parents and our community members. Uh, with Michigan's plan to use these funds, it's a little bit unique from the other states in that Michigan was looking to equalize more of the funding from the federal government from the highest per pupil funding in this one-time source to the lowest level and have a, a smaller range. Uh, when Michigan Legislature and the governor signed, uh, into law that approach, uh, folks at the federal government and the U.S. Department of Education said, wait a second, we don't think that comports with the federal rules that we put forward. So the Michigan Department of Education officials who were tasked by our state statute with carrying out our state law met with the officials from the United States Department of Education this fall. And in late November, we heard they had worked out, uh, an agreement, but it has tight rules on, uh, the students in which the funds can be spent on and the type of activities on which, uh, they can be spent. Uh, 50% of the funding, uh, needs to go to at least, uh, 50% needs to go to academic learning loss. We agree with that wholeheartedly, that makes great sense. Uh, 10.3% needs to go to after-school programming. Another 10.3% needs to go to summer programming, so we will, uh, look to channel those, uh, in those directions as well. Uh, and then the remaining, uh, bulk can go to, uh, a menu of allowed uses. So now that we've got the rulebook, uh, this, we're looking to engage more and more of our stakeholders on how we can spend these dollars. So I look forward to, uh, reporting more and more on that progress and also communicating more and more, uh, with our communications team. Uh, and even, uh, perhaps doing a survey with our community. We understand what the federal rules are, where the guardrails are and how we can spend these ones. Safety and security, I talked a little bit about this before. Uh, we are grateful for all of the work of our staff over many, many years. We have a well-developed risk assessment process. We use it both the building level and the district level. Uh, we have, uh, a, a team of folks dedicated to knowing every single child in our district well, to know if they're having a good day or a bad day and how to intervene. Uh, we have a great team in partnership with our Kent County Sheriff's Department. We have the highest number of school resource officers in our schools, uh, and we're, we're very pleased, uh, with that partnership. Uh, we continue and, uh, in light of the tragedy in Oxford, it's caused us all to reexamine all of our protocols, processes and procedures on safety and security, many of which we talk about, a few that we don't talk about, uh, for security reasons. Um, and, uh, just looking at those again, and we've had great meetings with our, uh, security consultants, uh, typically retired state and federal law enforcement officials, uh, to help with that as well as all of our work with our mental health community as well. So, uh, one of our takeaways is that we just need to continue to, unfortunately in this day and age, uh, make sure that everyone knows what to do in the event of an emergency. Uh, something like, uh, an active shooting is something that everyone needs to know. What are the recommended protocols on that? We train kids what to do when they hear the fire alarm and they do it very well because of the training. Uh, we are in a day and age, uh, where we also need to train people what to do if they're surrounded by active violence. We have, uh, safety and emergency plans for all sorts of potential threats and potential calamities. Uh, we want to make sure that, uh, we're up to date on all of those and that is work that, uh, is non-stop in the district. It's sort of like delivering the mail, it doesn't end, uh, we just keep doing it over and over, uh, and looking to get better in all of those areas. Uh, happy to talk to more people, uh, a, a, about that as we go forward. Uh, if you have specific questions, many I can answer some, uh, I, I don't disclose certain things on the reactive side. But again, as we said before, most of this is really on the proactive side, uh, with the best safety and security elements. Uh, just like to conclude my remarks by saying thanks to our, uh, great staff all throughout the district and to our community. Our community, your support, uh, in helping get kids to school and helping to send, uh, notes and resources and, uh, encouragement, um, helping to, uh, buffer kids from the, uh, most difficult aspects of this pandemic. I can't thank you all enough for that. Uh, thank you to our Board of Education and all of your support, uh, throughout these, uh, difficult times that we've been in. And just finally wishing everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. I hope 2022 is truly a year where we have resolution to some of these things. We talk about New Year's resolutions, I'm talking about the other type of resolution. We resolve some of these things that have, uh, been difficult things that we're all tired of, I know, in many ways. But thank you for your engagement, uh, these things will get solved, uh, as they always do by a committed group of people coming together and working hard and not caring about who gets the credit, but making sure our next generation, uh, are well-served in the process. Madam President, that concludes my report tonight.
The foundation update. Um, the foundation, as most people know, is where the school district ends in funding. The foundation picks up and in November we had our gala and we were able to raise a significant amount of money, uh, which goes toward our support our schools, $100,000. Um, so this month, the schools, I'm talking three buckets, school, district and specifically the classroom. So we're talking school right now, uh, which is support our schools. Um, they identified their grants prior to the gala and said that money now is going into the classroom, into the school, the classroom specifically, uh, science lab equipment, books for emergent readers, sensory equipment, indoor and outdoor recess, um, uh, games, student leadership opportunities, musical equipment. So it's, I'm just thankful for everyone who came out to support the foundation in November, um, because you'd now see some of those interactive opportunities, um, that the money is going to. Um, and then you talk about classroom, grants are coming up, January 2022 for the teachers to apply, uh, for grant-specific and that ends in February. Um, the reason I share this, again, it goes back to what do they have for curriculum? What kind of growth ideas do they have going on, uh, for the 2022 year? So I know a lot of our teachers are on break right now, which they deserve to be, um, but I know we'll have, um, a lot of them applying for that. And then the district, to your point, Dan, I know there has been some conversations around, um, mental health, mental, uh, health initiatives and the foundation is really, um, diving in with the connection between the district and the foundation and supporting that. And I've been a part of those conversations. Um, SEL was brought up a few times tonight and I will tell you that is definitely the target, um, for the foundation to support the mental health initiative. So, um, they've kind of touched everything, the foundation in this, in this report, so I'm very thankful for that. Um, the foundation again is something that was started about 10 years ago and has slowly moved its way into our classrooms. But now it's like anything, it's just starting to make big jumps and, um, we're going to see more and more of that, I think, in 2022, 23.
Uh, Could, could I just add to, to what you were saying? So SEL is an acronym that stands for social emotional learning. And what, what, what we mean by that, what we focus on that is teaching self-management. How does someone manage their own affairs, uh, get up on time, manage their emotions, manage their interactions with other people? Uh, we teach about responsible decision-making. That's about social emotional learning. Decisions that they make, the consequences they have for self and for others, uh, for future. We teach about relationship skills, uh, how to, um, have a conversation with somebody else, how to, um, uh, agree or disagree gracefully. Uh, all of those pieces come in with social emotional learning. It is about social awareness. It's not about social issues, but what's going on around you? What's the greater, uh, as we're in a, we're social creatures in a social environment, what's going on around you? And your own self-awareness, how are you responding to something? So those are the five components that we have of social emotional you responding to something? So those are the five components that we have of social emotional learning. It's not a secret. It's not some clandestine piece, but what we find is that when we help kids with those things, they're able to regulate themselves, and there's fewer issues that students have where they're off-target on their own learning.
Well, again, our goal here is to raise amazing students and children and community members. So, you know, we've missed two years of this, these conversations and these opportunities for them to just look someone in the eye and start a conversation with someone they didn't know, but know they maybe need an assignment from them or need to work with them now on a collaboration. So yes, I know the district is working on that, we are, and then also the foundation is working with the district. So it is very exciting. However, based on these three buckets, if you find an opportunity at the end of the year now, you would like to help the foundation, now is the time. Only a few days left to go to fhpss.f.org and go ahead and support more of these initiatives. Again, we're going to see more and more of this in 2022. And past the baton and opportunity, in starting January of 2022, Maggie Taren, our very own over here, will be now be the new board liaison between the foundation and the board, and she'll be reporting to you each month. So we're excited for that. The foundation says Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to all. Thank you. That is it. One second.